First, um, order of business. The nation proclaiming month of October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Calling all citizens, community agencies, religious organizations, medical facilities, and businesses to increase their participation in our effort to prevent domestic violence, thereby strengthening the community of H M N. So, I guess I'll just sign that. This comes from Corns, Ev-, um, Valipar Valley Family Violence Shelter.
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, you're here. Okay, I didn't know, I'm sorry.
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, um, we just wanted to thank this community for standing with us and support survivors of domestic violence. As October nears and we answer National Domestic Violence Awareness and Prevention meetings, we have our office located in Forestville now, together with Wilson County. We maintain such a good relationship here with Chief Sanchez and his department for a coordinated, key response team, which he chief his apartment. We would just like to thank on behalf of our colleagues and this.
Sure, I'm glad y'all are here. I'm sorry, I didn't know you were here.
Okay.
Welcome. We have the consent agenda items. It looked right to me, but I don't know if y'all noticed anything. Giving the motion. All in favor? And we have Mr. Wayne Meyer here today to present the 2019 to 2020 audit presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Everybody has a copy of the report. And if you would, I'd ask you, please turn to pages one and two of the report. I'm Wayne Meyer, and my firm is in Pleasantville. And this is a comprehensive, this is a financial audit of the city of Pope for the year ending September 30, 2020, on pages one and two. And this is a unmodified opinion. The primary purpose of performing an audit is expressing an opinion on a financial statement. And it's basically four different kinds of opinions that can be given. This is an unmodified opinion, it's the highest form of opinion that can be given. I think in the past several years, the opinion's been modified for one reason or another. I mean, GADB 54, things like that nature. But this year, the first time in a lot of years, it's been unmodified opinion, so it's a good clean opinion. Uh, if you turn to page one, where it says audit of responsibility, the first paragraph, the second sentence, it says, "We conducted our audit in accordance with auditing standards, generally accepted United States of America. We have rules and procedures we must follow when we perform an audit, probably the same as engineers." And we're just stating here that we followed all the rules and procedures when we performed our audit. Um, next, if you would, let's just turn over to page number 18 of the report. Uh, page 18 of the report is kind of a bird's eye view of what transpired in the city last year, with all the funds except for your utility fund. Uh, we're going to be looking at the first column there, the general fund. As you can see in that first column, if you go down three lines to the bottom, you have a net increase for the year in the general fund of $15,326. Uh, your ending reserve, if you look at the very bottom of that first column on page 18, plus $518,000. And if you compare that to your expenditures, which is about, in that first paragraph, about six or seven lines up, of $645,000, you have about 75% eighty, plus 75% recovery. That second column is your economic development MMF fund. Look at the very bottom of the page, in that second column, your ending reserve or equity was $72,803. And if you go, turn over to page number 20, is your general fund in more detail. You notice there's four columns on page 20. Uh, this is what you call a budget comparative schedule for the general fund. The first column is your budget as originally adopted for last year. The second column is your final amended budget. On the third column are your income and expense figures that basically are identical to what we just looked at at the previous page, which is broken out in more detail. And then that last column is your budget variance column. And in that last column is the, if the number has brackets around it, it's an unfavorable variance, and if it doesn't have brackets, it's a favorable variance. Couple items I want to point out to you that I find interesting, you know, doing these audits. Um, first of all, you all pass a balanced budget, and you may not think that being unusual, but it's extremely unusual. You know, you rarely see balanced budgets being passed anymore these days, but you did. The other thing is if you look at that last column at the very top, under your revenues, in that last column, you see that you brought in $55,991 more in revenues than you had budget. You brought in $802,000, if you look at this third column there, in your total revenues, your budget is $746,000. You exceeded your budget by $55,000. That's a positive budget variance. And then on your expenditures, again, if you look at that fourth column, under, where it says total expenditures in that line, you underspent your budget by $104,950. You spent $645,000 last year, you, um, your budget is $746,000. Anyhow, that is what contributes to your surplus increasing in your general fund. And I'm asked some, oftentimes, you know, what is a good, how much is enough as far as reserves? I said you could never have enough reserves. I've seen reserves of $1 million disappear overnight, so, anyhow. Okay, if you turn to page 21 and 22, this is your utility fund balance sheet. You notice there's three columns on either page. The first column on either page is a snapshot of your utility fund at September 30th, uh, 2020. That second column on either page would be your September 30th of the previous year. So, a couple items here. If you look on page 22 at the very bottom, in that first column, one line, two lines from the bottom of that first column, your unrestricted equity in your utility fund at the end of the year is $295,599. Uh, the previous year was $358,35. So, it went down a little bit, but not, nothing to be concerned about. And I'll show you in a bit why it probably went down. But you still have a good, healthy, retained balance of equity there. The other thing is your current ratio. Your current ratio is your current assets divided by your current liabilities. So, if you go on the top of page 21, in that first column at the top, where it says total current assets, you see $360,336. If you divide that by your total current liabilities, which is on page 22, in that first column at the top, $180,000. You have almost a two-to-one current ratio. And you like to keep at least a 1.5-to-1 or greater current ratio, so you love that. And if you look in the second column of either page, basically, you have a little bit higher than two-to-one ratio from last year. It went down a little bit, but nothing drastic. And then, if you turn over to page 23, again, there's three columns. The first column, this is your income statement. The first column, your income statement for last year. The second column is the income statement for the previous year. So, you kind of compare the two, um, two things here. Um, if you look right in the middle of that schedule, where it says operating income loss, in that first column, you see $54,443. So, you had a net profit from operations of $54,000. If you look in that second column, you had an operating income last year of $188,000, so it went down significantly, almost $130,000. And the reason is, if you go up above one line, where you had your operating expenses, your operating expenses last year was of $1,333,000 compared with $866,000 the previous year, so they went up quite a bit. And the reason would be, you go up above three, another two or three lines, where it says other services charged, last year's $514,000 increase from $339,000 from the previous year. That'd be like repairs, supplies, things of that nature. You're, look at your personal services, which would be a couple lines up from your other service charges, your personal stuff, then your salaries and your benefits, the $365,000 last year, the previous year was $327,000, so it went up a little bit there also. Okay, a couple other items here. Uh, if you look on page, go to page 39, if you would, please. On page 39, at the bottom of that schedule, and, um, that, this is your debt schedule, the total debt of the city. And, um, you can see you have many different kinds of debt. Some debt you would consider debt, there's other debt here that you probably would not consider debt, but the AICPA does. So, if you look in that first column, and there's a grand total, your beginning of the year debt was $1,023,000. If you go into the fourth column, the end of the year debt was $1,170,000, so it went up about $100,000. Included instead, you had your bonds, your GO bonds, and they're still payable through the year 2028, so you have about another seven years, six, seven years left on those bonds. Uh, you have other kind of debt called net pension liability debt. That would be your TMRS plan. Um, they started considering that being debt about seven or eight years ago. And what they do in your TMRS plan is they look at what is in that plan as far as cash and cash flow, and assets and things, and they compare that with what is actually owed from the plan. If you owe more off from the plan than you have in the plan, that is considered to be, um, net pension liability debt. You have, next category, you have net OPEB liability. What OPEB is, that's your other post-employee benefits. They started this about five years ago, where this is for retired people who still receive a benefit from the city. And they, these, these are, these numbers are all calculated by actuaries, and, uh, so that is what would be, um, OPEB liability. Then you have compensated allowances. And that would be your crude vacation pay, crude but untaken vacation pay. And then if you look down there on your business, where it says business, I typed out, you have a capital lease. Uh, I think you financed some meters last year, and that would be, um, the balance, about $370,480. Um, even though the debt increased, in the general scheme of things, compared to other cities, it's not very much debt at all. Uh, it is some deep debt. Uh, if you turn to page 43, in the middle of that page, where it says net pension liability, we just talked about that. Um, in that right-hand column, you see that your net pension li-, total liability from the pension fund is $771,000. Um, you have what you call fiduciary net position, that's cash and cash approved, $673,000, so that, that a net pension liability at the end of the year, that's where we got the $66,000. One other item in this report, it'd be at the very back on page number 75, these are your other funds in the city. Um, the reason they're back here is under the formula that we have to use when we do these reports, these are not considered major funds, these are considered non-major funds, so you go in the back. But you kind of, you can see all the rest of the funds you have in the city. You can look at the very, very bottom line, that'd be your ending equity, you can go from like left to right, you can see what you have in each of these funds. And, uh, like your third column, your core technology fund, you have $3,200 there at the end of the year. Um, you have the economic development PDC fund, you have $218,000, and yet, and so on and so forth, so. That would be your other funds in the city. And then lastly, we have an insert, one page, two-page insert in the beginning of the report. This is the management letter. Uh, the first two items are computer systems. Uh, we basically have this in every year, and, uh, so, you notice this computer system is becoming less useful due to every change in governmental environment. It's a DOS system that does not interface with your Windows building software. Recommend the city consider updating the computer system. Uh, next one, we know the city cannot add an asset account to its computer system, therefore any new CDs or bank accounts are being entered as expense accounts. Recommend the city consider updating the computer system. And then at the very bottom, your segregation duties, I don't know when and if we're ever going to change this. They do not distinguish between a city the size of Pope and a city of size of San Antonio are still held to the same standard. This is, basically what it says there is that you do not have enough people in your accounting department to have full, uh, full segregation duties. They're looking like for you to have like 25, 30 people in your accounting department, but it would be not feasible to have that in this city. But they're going to change this standard, but they don't, they haven't changed this. And at the top of the back page, under administrative, I think this has been taken care of, but we know the city does not have a certified investment officer. Recommend the city appoint employees. You know, it says employee, you can appoint anybody you want. You can appoint Joe Bull on the street if you want, you know. But we, they have, uh, employee in their year investment officer. The other 10 classes, I think the first set of classes is like $10. You don't take care of that, but you have to send somebody to school in Austin for like theater class. And that is it. So, thank you.
Right, anything more to speak, do you need to get calls?
Yes.
Do you want to give the report now?
All right, as I guess most everyone's heard or seen, Phelps has had a pretty big change at our last meeting. Uh, the board voted to terminate the CEO with cause. Uh, since all of our discussions were in executive session, I'm not able to really discuss what all was discussed, but, um, as you saw on the paper, and just with what happened out of close session, a motion was made to terminate with cause. It had a second, and it had a five-two vote. Uh, two of the members are just advisory council for Paul City and Pervonia. They were in favor, but for official record, it was three-two vote, um, for the termination. Uh, and so, it was, you know, we were in deliberation for about three hours, and then, um, made a decision that we thought was the best for the company and moving forward. And so, right now, we're still don't have, we don't have a new CEO yet, um, through the, um, the chain of command, if you would call it, the CFO is the current interim, making those decisions. Um, and then at our next meeting, next week, we'll discuss interim plans and posting of the new position. Uh, and so, other than that, I'd say there was a long meeting for that, and all we did was we passed a, an agreement for the February, we're still dealing with the February winter storm numbers, and an agreement to pay what we currently plan to pay, that our current rates cover, and then CPS is still working on the huge rate that we're hoping that they're able to get out of, so that we don't have to pass any debt to cover that for, um, for the five-year period of time. Um, and then it was just employee insurance, was there anything to cover? Um, at our next meeting, we'll have, um, the employee handbook, employee bonus discussion, um, and then, like I said, the CEO, uh, her situation moving forward. At any point in time, I may be able to share more, um, I'll come and do that, but that's it, so it's all, I think at the executive session, there's not too much I can say at this point, but we had enough information to, to terminate with cause, so.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the conversation. Okay, discussion of possible action, ratify property tax increase in the 2021, 2022 fiscal year budget.
We already spoke about that, right? We already spoke about that percentage, right?
Right.
Okay.
Well.
We all came to base into that consensus.
Yeah, but we have to take action to ratify it. Um, and that is the, this is where I get all lost. Increasing the budget, dollars, so it's, it was $13,000? Okay, so we need a, this, this one, motion may, somebody's to make this. This one, right here, there's a suggestion, and they give a suggestion on the best way to say.
All right, I got it, okay. I move to ratify the property tax increase of $13,000 in the 2021, 2022 fiscal year budget.
All in favor? Just all this wording gets to me, I don't, I get these. So, now we'll have a public hearing discussion, uh, public hearing on adopting the budget ordinance 092021A, making appropriations for the support of the city of Pope for fiscal year 2021 and 22. And that would be, yes. So, it's the budget we discussed and agreed upon at our workshop.
So, we just got to fill it out for, or?
Well, we have a public hearing right now. Is there anyone like to talk about it to us? There's no one here. So, I guess we can move right along to, uh, possible action on this, if we want to approve the budget. I have to ask you to do anything, where's that? He's standing right in the house, he's here. But I need a motion first.
I make a motion that we approve the 2021 fiscal year budget.
Okay, I'm going to go around and ask for a yea or nay. Annabelle? Paul? Steve? Danny? And?
Danny?
All right. Discussion of possible action on the EDC's operating budget. We just have to approve it, they won't approve themselves, we just have to approve that we approved it like that. All in favor? All right, now we're going to have, um, discussion and action on adopting the tax ordinance 092021B, levying an annual add-along tax, setting specific tax rate, setting due date, and providing for penalties on delinquent taxes for the use and support of the city of Pope for the 2021 tax year. And there's a suggested way to make that motion, yeah.
So, if they don't pay, they do.
Well, they, it would be, there would be penalties, yeah.
And it's always been?
It's always been.
But the federal government already does?
It's, it's, it always had that, that's not the new.
I'd make a motion to put the ordinance 092021B, um, property tax increase, option rate of 12108, which makes officially is 1.35 increase in action.
Second.
All in favor? And although they make us say that we would up, our tax rate actually will be, it's just because of the legal wording, but our, our tax rate actually will be. I know, I know, that's very frustrating. Okay, amendment one to ordinance 091620A, budget ordinance. This is to amend our actual spending and revenues on our budget for this year. So, we can't just, we have to stay in budget, and that's, so when things had to be spent more in some place, we took from areas where we still had money available and kept it balanced, we were still at balance. It's just, we do this maybe twice a year, um, to kind of keep up with the budget, can you, you sure you got twice a year?
Then, the main thing on this one is to get the space department, the money they can spend from salary to equipment to the maintenance.
They can get a car. That was the other thing. Right. So, y'all can see where the, on the last page of this, it talks about the general fund revenue adjustment, increase-decrease, expenditure adjustment, increase-decrease, the same with the waterworks. So, you can see where we're at. But we still.
You still need to do a motion?
Yes, sir. What's matter to you?
Oh, she's sending a motion.
Oh, go for it. I thought you had a question, raise your.
Madam Mayor, I, uh, make a motion that we amend number one to ordinance 0921208, making appropriations for the support of the city of Pope for the fiscal year October 1, 2019 through September 30, 2021.
Is that correct? No, it's just the number eight.
Number eight? No, you said zero, zero nine two five.
The confidence, yeah, that's fine. You said it right. I need a second. All in favor? Um, ordinance 092021 to cancel the November election due to unopposed candidates.
Make a motion that we approve the ordinance 092021, cancel the November special election to elect council members due to opposed candidates.
All in favor? All right. So, the state has come up with some new things, and I just would like to say that through the COVID year, um, we behaved very well, and we did these kind of things just naturally. we behaved very well and we did these kind of things just naturally. I mean, there's quarantine, still paid. Whoever was on quarantine, they still got paid. What else is this one? So the first one is that implementing the requirements. No, no, I'm sorry. This is not, this is something else. This is sort of like when we had the terrible shooting here in town. If an officer had needed time off and it was up to the chief to make those decisions, they would be able to have mental health days. And I think it's up to twelve, I mean, three twelve-hour shifts that they get, still paid to have some time to gather themselves. But the state decided to make these suggestions, I guess. So we're, we have resolutions. They're not ordinances, but they're resolutions that we can live by, policies. So the first one is this. Resolution R 092021M, implementing the requirements of Senate Bill 1359 and Amendment Section 614.05, LGC, establishing a mental health leave policy for police officers. So this will go into our policy if we approve this. Do you have any comment on it, Chief?
No, I think that's a great idea. It's, it's always been around and you just never know. You know, a traumatic event just like we did there. I mean, you know, we were there seventeen hours and we saw things that we didn't want to see. And unfortunately, you know, it gets to us sometimes.
Sure.
You know, just, just everything else that we see, it's not, it's not worth it.
So I need a.
I make a motion to approve the resolution number R-09201M, implementing a legal leave policy for police officers.
All in favor? And the next one is Resolution R 092021Q, implementing the requirement of House Bill 2073 in Chapter 180, LGC, establishing a paid quarantine leave for police, police officers. And like I said, we did that. So I'm glad.
I make a motion that we approve the Resolution R 092021Q, implementing requirements of HB 2073 in Chapter 10, R 180, LGC, establishing a paid quarantine leave for police officers.
Second. All in favor? And then this one is Resolution R 092021O, joining with the State of Texas and political subdivisions of the state as a party in the Texas opioid settlement agreement secured by the Office of the Attorney General. And I think our part is about three thousand dollars? Four, almost four thousand dollars. I mean, it's, but it's still making a statement that opioids are bad and doctors are whoever prescribed them. Okay, Big Pharma, that's who probably is the bad guy and the biggest up the ladder of it all. You're right, Paul. Anyway, so this is just asking for our part in that huge fine lawsuit, which is, I think it's good to make a statement, my opinion. So.
I make a motion that we approve Resolution R 092021O, joining with the State of Texas and political subdivision of the state as a party of the Texas opioid settlement agreement secured by the Office of the Attorney General.
All in favor? Great, thank you very much. Okay, Pope Little League, it wants to do some irrigation work on the inside. We approved dirt work last time, but this is some more. And they're taking care of it, but they're just like they're supposed to. You come to us and ask them for it, okay. So let's do it.
I make a motion that we approve the vote for the league's part here.
Second. All in favor? Alright, great. The PTO has asked for street closure on Brinkager between North Carroll and North Dixon on Saturday, October 30th, from three to eight for the PTO Fall Festival. We always do it. It makes it a safer environment. All in favor? Okay. We have our reports. Buck has had some heavy problems yesterday, so he's not very nice. His report is here, though. You can see that things are good there. Our taxes, it's kind of hard to be a hundred percent. That's very nice. Chief, would you like to give the police report?
Good evening, America, Council of Lords. For the month of October, oh, correction, August, we received a total of fifty-two calls for service, thirty-four citations or thirty-four written reports, and eighteen daily logs were reported. So that's a total of fifty-two cases, which is, it's a fairly amount. I know last year or last month, we had about fifty-one, fifty-two. This one, so we've been having a lot of calls, a lot of calls for service. Traffic enforcement, we did fairly well in August. We had a hundred sixty-three traffic stops, ninety-one citations were issued, and a hundred eleven were warnings. Non-traffic were seven citations. And you can see, we had three for possession of drug paraphernalias, one assault by contact, two theft under a hundred, and one minor possession of tobacco. And city ordinance violations, we had zero. So a total of ninety-eight citations were given to the courts for their review. The second page, the code enforcement animal control reports. We had no code enforcements. We had four animal control complaints and one city ordinance violation for high grass. Incidents of arrest, we had a total of five arrests. Going back to the animal complaints, I know in August, we've been having a lot of complaints with a lot of pit bulls. So last month, we picked up five pit bulls all at the same time, a family. And they've been roaming the streets for quite a while. We made contact with the owners and they refused to do anything. So we called our Miss Yanta, which is a no-kill shelter. She was more than happy to come pick them up and now they have a good home. So they're a good place. So we've also had a couple of other pit bulls just down the road by the school, the football field. And these two dug under the fence. The owner wasn't aware of it and he rectified the problem. So he basically fenced in the whole yard, so we haven't had any problems since. Myself and Sergeant James, we, we came in on September the sixth and we decided to drive around town to look for code enforcement, city ordinance violations. And what we found was, was quite a bit. So what we looked at, we have quite a bit of junk vehicles out here in the city. A lot. I counted twenty-five and I know there's a lot more. So we made contact with several individuals. We gave them warnings, we talked to them, and we gave them the ten-day notice. So as of right now, since the sixth, we've gotten four vehicles removed from the city. Two more pending. They called me this morning asking for a little extra time, which I gave them at the end of the month. So again, we're going to probably do this every other week. Go out and drive on the, maybe on the Thursday and hit all the junk vehicles. Like I said, we have too many out there and it's, it's not looking good. Same thing as property maintenance. We talked about the one at the school called Ms. Fisher. And apparently somebody had cut the grass. She wasn't aware of it, so somebody did cut that grass back there, right there by the elementary school. And again, we've gone throughout the City of Pope, we've given them warnings, the ten-day notice to cut them. If not, give us, give me a call, give them a few more days. But everybody's basically been abiding by our rules. Roosters, that's another thing we've had here. We've had a lot of roosters, especially in the Ridgeland area. I went out there and I found a total of four roosters out there. Just didn't find them. We found them and we've gotten, the family members took them to another place. So I know there's some more over here and some down there. So again, slowly but surely, we're gonna, we're gonna be enforcing that and getting them. So and I advise them of the city ordinance or the ordinance with the chickens. Of six. So everybody's basically abiding by the six chickens over here.
Have you noticed Gene Mosmeyer? Is that legal?
We're gonna, we're gonna go make contact with him.
It's awful!
It's gotten worse.
He lives in his RV. He has a camp, he has a TV on his porch. I go drive by there every day, but.
Yeah, I'm driving by there, he's, he's never there. So I'll have to catch him during the day and then talk to Chief. Right here on the. Geez, Mosmeyer.
He's all his house.
Oh, yeah, okay, yeah, yeah.
So what can he do? Because it's industrial or commercial? What is that?
It's commercial.
It's commercial. He had his business there. He was a mechanic there. He owns it. He owns a shop, but he's not working there. He's living there. So his business is.
He runs Washington, so he probably needs to hold his grains of water in the north.
Can you live in your commercial property?
Well, you can live in a commercial property.
Yes. Can we have, can you live in your RV in this city?
I need to take a look at that.
Yeah, that's right.
So September the tenth, which was a Friday, Officer Fanaro, his day off, decided to come in and serve some warrants for the City of Pope. So we contacted probably about, we looked about ten to twelve people. We contacted six people. They came in and they paid their fines, which was over twenty-one hundred dollars. And we made arrangements for them because they had multiple warrants. So they're going to be coming in every month and paying off their tickets. So what the officers are going to start doing is coming on the days off and trying to get as much as here in the City of Pope and then move ourselves to Floridale and just the surrounding areas and.
Are they a hunger street?
Yes, they, they get the warrant fee at the, at the end of the month. So yes. With individuals with quite a bit of warrants, talked to the sheriff, Sheriff Stewart, and he advised me, if they have quite a bit of warrants, total in a, you know, certain amount of money just to get them a call and see if they can accept them. And because a lot of times they don't want to pay two, three thousand dollars, might as well serve up their time. So, but we haven't had that yet. But when it comes, we'll, we'll be contacting the sheriff. Other than that, that's, that's pretty much it.
Thank you, Chief. I appreciate your work. I really do appreciate you taking care of the ordinances. That's a very unpopular thing to do. But it, our city is a pretty little place.
It is. You're right.
It does a fantastic job keeping all the highway pretty. So we could keep our neighborhood pretty and safe.
And I've talked to a lot of people and they agree a hundred percent with that.
Tall grasses, snakes.
Yes. And with the dry heat, we're having a hundred-degree heat and it's not.
Snakes are dangerous.
Chief, doesn't the name this man be referred to somewhere?
It was a babysitter, baby twice. He's had like eleven, twenty.
Off the end of it?
Yes.
How can he survive? That's a lie.
Sorry. No, we just heard about that. If he was a young boy, he's not, I guess, he's like a fifth or sixth grade?
Uh, six, he's six. But he's, his giddy is a rail, so there's not much of him.
Kind of scary. Yes, ma'am. Okay, for the month of August, what Chief had said, there were actually eight warrants that were paid in full. Of that, it was twenty-two thousand five hundred and twenty-four dollars. Of that amount, the officer will get four hundred, that's fifty dollars a warrant. So there was eight warrants that came in and then, there was one person that had like four. She paid one. She'll be coming in and paying monthly on one warrant at a time. So we had a person that had like four warrants. Anyway, okay. On new cases for the month of August, there were ninety-nine citations that were submitted to the court by the police department. Of those, there were forty closed citations for the month. And then forty-eight cases were submitted for the court for payment. Okay, so August wasn't too good of a month as far as a total court income, but September, it, it really helped with the warrants and the numbers are getting up there for the month of September. Because we're going to have those ninety-nine cases coming into September. And that's it. Any questions for the judge? Thank you very much. So I'm hoping, I think Chief said possibly every month, you'll be trying to get some. So hopefully we can, even eight at a time is great. Anybody have anything else?
One idea I thought. Care about Stockville's work from the business side, bringing businesses in? Now I was wondering if you might want to reach out to Bank Safety and see how they're promoting the business growth in Stockville and see if there's something we can get in charge of to promote more businesses in the company? Something more of interest in the business or?
Yeah, and EDC has that responsibility as well. Well, no, I mean, we can all do it together, absolutely.
It's, uh, Jennifer, Attorney Jennifer? She's the head of, but she's like a part-time employee also or something like that.
See, they have a team that had something on monitor, Sam phone, that's promoting like this kind of sales. It's just a thought.
Sure. So did we run off Russell Frisky? He's not coming back?
He's in Florida, according to this.
That's what I thought. I mean, I just don't know if anyone talks. He wanted to put the car lock?
Oh, yeah. Well, we had to wait a year, right?
He's been waiting in Florida.
He just needed not to put a temporary building on commercial property.
Yeah, we split two, two. Well, he or her hope he can come back and readjust his plan.
He can. He can come back to us before a year if he readjusts his plan.
Yeah, he has.
What if, you know, we, we were having that discussion where what if he permanent? I mean, it's, they call it temporary building. What if they permanently, what if he permanently puts it, you know, bolted? Just like they had with the, the little.
K, four K.
Four K. I mean, those are temporary buildings.
Well, they built them on the, on the slats.
Yeah, if he builds it on the slab, that would be acceptable.
It's, he can come to, back to us with those kind of ideas.
I mean, I, I think that'd be acceptable. I don't.
Well, that's not on the agenda tonight. So we will call banks about that and see.
Just a thought, just because they have like four new businesses.
Did you have anything tonight that you wanted to share with us?
Just that we are working on the Cooley Tower modifications. And we had another suburb contractor come in and they're going to draw us up some good CAD drawings and give us a good estimate. The modifications may be, it may be cheaper to build a new tower than it would be to modify the existing one because of the age of the existing one, et cetera, et cetera. So we're looking at that. And we've also got some numbers on the screen and the plan that just came in today. And balancing whatever, the choices could easily stay within that amount.
I'm glad y'all are still checking along. We'll break to counsel as soon as we can.
Better ideas come from different folks and sometimes this one and that one together. Anyway, we're working on that right now. And hopefully get that other contractor out here this week. He said earlier today that he's hoping to get one of his key people out here this week.
I wanted to connect the Kurt to the street, it's really nice.
Thank goodness, I probably got that wrong. Okay, well, we're adjourned. Thank you all so much for your time.